The time is 6:32 on Tuesday, March 25th, and I'd like to call our budget hearing to order. Mary Jane?
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. What you're going to see tonight is the consolation of the work that the school committee did with our budget committee, and the leadership team, and our business manager. So what I'm presenting tonight is two specific budget scenarios. We met with the town earlier in the end of last week. And because there's been some little pickup with the town manager, we don't have a lot of firm numbers to report. So they've asked us to present two scenarios for the budget. So you'll see both of these tonight. And then move forward in the next couple of weeks, we'll firm up the numbers and present them. Okay, there we go. So as always, when creating a budget, one of the things we like to do is maintain looking at our strategic plan. Strategic plan was created about 2022, it goes to 2026. So when we take a look at the budget, we want to make sure that we continue to visit all of our priorities in this. And I'm not going to read every slide to you, but I think this will be important to read. And basically, we're going to talk about fostering strong and positive leadership to the families. We'll look to meet the needs of all students. And hopefully, through the budget development, we're able to design and develop powerful, engaging learning experiences. We keep that in mind when creating the budget. We use relevant data in our decision-making. Now, we're creating curriculum based on our M-CAS boards, benchmark testing, attendance. So really taking a little bit of the data to help us drive some of the budget materials that we have. We strive to be an organization that welcomes and respects and embraces everybody's points of view. And so we're creating this budget to want to make sure that everybody can represent, you know, students of all socioeconomic needs, special ed, really taking a look at all and following back with that when creating a budget. So included with those priorities is providing training and support, which is professional help to make sure that our students are getting the best resources from our staff. And we try to include that with creating the budget. And we believe that everybody in GDS can grow. We, as a DL team, our district leadership team, occasionally, we're a DL team. We always look for solutions when creating, when we find a challenge. So our district leadership team tries to find ways to be a solution-based leadership team. So when we pick, try to solutions, and we continue driving towards that daily. And again, one other thing that we do when creating a budget is taking a look at our core values. Number one is first and foremost, students come first. Every decision we make is based on students, every single decision. So whatever has the most impact, we really make sure we try to keep that in our hearts. But in order to do that, we have to build relationships with our community members. We have a really good rapport with our town managers and our school committee. We work well together to make sure we're calling those relationships, we're getting over the lead. Communications are critical. And again, that growth mindset is really what we need to be. What can we do to be successful? It can't, you know, I'll be there, but we have to really be positive and see how we can move forward to do that. And then again, let's take a look at everybody's ideas and everybody's social view. Don't offer the same experiences, develop from different points of view. So when creating this budget, having those different points of view gives us different perspectives. So we try to do that when we're creating. Okay, move on to the next slide. So these are our budget objectives for '26. We don't always get everything we want out of these objectives, but we certainly strive to be the best we can when it comes time to creating a budget. So we're always looking for the best for our teachers and students. You know, we really get to the point that we're trying to do the best we can with what we have. We're trying to get out of that. We're trying to do the best we can for our students to move forward. So that's what we're trying to do. We create, we work with the town leadership to create a fiscally responsible budget for student staff as well as the community members. High-quality instruction and support. Well, these are kind of the same thing that I talked about last time. These are some of the drivers that help us. It's important that we provide resources and materials and training for staff. And sometimes you get to do that through other ways, for example, grants and other opportunities that come up. So when creating a budget, those are things we also consider when creating a budget. A well-rounded menu of services, supports, and opportunities. Some of that includes meeting with local colleges and other places to help us round out what we can offer to the students. So to create our particular needs and games on them, that's not in the budget, but those are other ways for us to offer those services and supports and opportunities for our students. But you'll see us talk about that later on. And then we try to grow wherever possible. We need to know that technology is always changing. We need to make sure our students stay current. And last but not least, we have to meet the facilities and maintenance needs of our buildings and grounds. As we know, we know the lovely school, but it is getting aged, so they're starting to, things we have to start taking care of. And that's important, we maintain that facility. At the high school, it's a little different. It's in great shape. Our custodians and our maintenance crew are with fabulous jobkeeping.
You got that backwards. You have it backwards. You said East Meadow is showing age. High school is showing age. East Meadow is doing just fine.
Yeah, right. Sorry. But it starts to show age. So some of these things when we create the budget are things that we don't know what's going to happen. So we, you know, so we have to try to also be predictive when it comes down to the budget. Yes, East Meadow is going to break down, we're fairly new, but we'll start to see, you know, years down the road, things we have to predict. Thank you for that.
Uh huh.
Okay, now get into the need. The budget development really is an evolving process. When creating a budget, all we can do is make a lot of predictions, because we all know when we do our own household budget, things really sometimes throw us for the, whether it could be just our own personal budgets, could be electric, you know, gas, those types of things. We also have those same things when we have our school budget. So we have to do a lot of predictions. Some of those predictions look at transportation, what is that going to look like? So we can do a lot of research when it comes down to doing our budgets. Let's take a look at what we've been in the past, what we think we can predict for the future. So do a lot of research. So really, a lot of thinking out of the box, what can we do to support this? And just getting all the information we need. So our business manager sits down with all department heads, and they build this budget, what people want, what they need, and specifically, what's going to help the district. And then we analyze the data to make our decisions and look at the tools we need. After that, we look at, the DLT looks at the budget request. What do we really need? Let's hone in what we really need, what can, what do we need, what can we do without, and what do we want? We kind of put everything into our wants, our needs, and our wishes. So we kind of take a look at that moving forward. And then we manage the budget to fit in the parameters that we think and we've been given to support those goals. But again, budget development constantly changing. If somebody was into the district or somebody who's out of the district, so it's a lot of moving parts at any given time. So this year, we're asking for a reduced service budget. Now, a reduced service budget is a little bit different than a level service budget. A level service budget takes the current nearest level of budget and asks for the same level year after year. But the last couple of years, we've really been going down with our services. So this year, we've actually labeled it as a reduced service budget. So there are many factors when that happens. That talks about student enrollment, and they talk transportation, salary increases, insurance. This year, insurance is going up quite a bit for our staff members. So that's going to be part of another prediction we'll necessarily have. So our proposed budget is less than a level service from FY '25 to FY '26. So the current budget is a reduction in services for the school. Just to put that out. So the last two school budgets impacted our schools, as you can see, the last couple of years, there's been some reductions. So we cut quite a few cuts through, whether it be retirements, or somebody may have left the district, we did those positions. So these are the positions that currently open for the last few years. They had PE and wellness at the high school, social studies, the Malaga media special, as well as special education teacher who was reduced to part-time. And then at the elementary school, we had band instruments and special ed. We can reduce some of our services with special ed, finding other ways to service the students. And then we reduced, added assistant positions, and we've left some air professional positions empty. So, you know, people have done in the past, keep that in mind. Again, hence that we've been reduced budget. If you are the full level budget, I think we have to do that. So initially, when we did our budget, we were $1,486,945,000 in a deficit. So the DLT, this manager, myself, took a look at what we could do to bring that deficit down. But this is how we got there. We are minimum A district, but I'll explain a little bit about that. Our special ed costs have been increasing, and the OSD rate increases for our district placements, I'll explain that as well. Transportation and, so these are some of the variables that are driving the budget costs we have here. So what's a minimum A district? You probably all heard about the Student Opportunity Act. So as a result of that, we are a minimum A district. And of Massachusetts, there are 233 minimum A districts, as you can see, 2,190 of 190. So we're continuing to increase. As a result of this district's funding formula, minimum A should, is trying to close that funding gap a little bit. So if you take a look at our district foundation enrollment, they multiply by $30 per student. And that's how we get that additional money. So FY '26, which means the state will contribute an additional $75 per student. Okay, so each student will get an additional $175. The state's final FY '20 budget, they actually gave us $104, which only gave us about an additional $48,000 for our budget for last year, for this year. So as you can see, that $48,000 that they're giving us to close the gap, really not significant enough for us to close our fiscal gap. So just to also let you know, that Chapter 70 is the state funding. That increased by 1.98%, but the town is actually now required to spend at least 6.6% based on that formula. Special ed costs continue to grow. There is, as you can see, from FY '22 to FY '26, there is almost a million-dollar increase in special ed costs in that amount of time. That's significant. And the impact of, it's called the Office of the Operational Service Department. They are part of Department of Education, who helps us determine what our cost is going to be for special ed. So they can say, this year, we're going to raise it to 14%. FY '25, they raised 4.6% and 3.6%. What that means is any student who's placed out of district, there's a cap on how much they can charge, those places can charge. This year, thankfully, it's only 3.6% over what they charged the year before. But if you can look at 2024, it was a 14% for students that are placed out.
Which department of ed? Is this federal or state?
It's operations of some special.
It's the operational service division. It's part of the state's executive.
That's, I just wanted to refer it with state.
It's, yeah.
The state determines what that regulation looks like. Oh, thanks, I knew I was going to forget that.
So a quick question. If they can only charge an additional 3.6% operationally, is the difference between the 3.6 and the 7.88 transportation-related costs associated with that?
No, that is just the tuition.
Yeah, that 1.765 million is just the out-of-district tuition.
It's just tuition.
And that's how much, the total increase from FY '25 to FY '26 is 7.88.
But it says it can only be 3.6.
So the 3.6 is what each individual school placement can raise its tuition. And so if we have an additional out-of-district that we didn't have last year, that's going to be part of that 7.88.
So two different percentages.
Got it.
So this is another driving factor for us. As you can see, the foundation budget is in blue, and the inflation rate is red. You can see that the foundation budget is not, is outpacing, the inflation rate is outpacing what the state is allocating to the district, with the exception of a few other places. But inflation rate is not keeping up with the funding formula for Chapter 70. I mean, there are a few places. Generally, we don't know FY '26 holds yet, but we'll find out as we move forward. These are our special, which we kind of already talked a little about, inflation. Transportation has specifically, has really risen tremendously in the last several years. This is for students who are special ed. They may be McKinney-ventus, some of them went into district, will may need transportation back wherever the other place has been paying from. McKinney-ventus is for home students, so if we have to, so that will be the transportation costs we have to incur. Students who go to Smith Vocational and other non-standard runs have considered, have increased considerably. Because we have some constraints and improvements, our maintenance costs for the high school continue to increase. So that's a cost factor we have to keep in consideration. Again, special ed costs continue to increase, and the district, we require 22% increase to add district tuition in the last three years. And then again, high need students. So these are, these are our driving expense factors. This is how we got to our additional deficit of $1.4 million. Now, right now, we are looking at a working deficit of $335,000. And I'm going to show you how we got there. So when we did our original budget, 1.4, we're down to 3.335. And those are the numbers that we're looking at. So initially, when we got to 1.4, we got to 10. The pocketed balance book. So we're going to work with town leadership, make some budget cuts, we first announce supplies and services. And we do have some flexibility with our circuit breaker revolving. And then we make some difficult decisions, what is that going to look like? So to get to $335,000, we had to make some cuts. We need to specifically get to make cuts to get us to the 335. As you can see, we've really taken a foot hard look at all these areas and reduced them. You can see the maintenance facility actually went into negative curriculum. We actually took some services out, so that brings us back to negative as well. So you can see, 70% of our budget goes to the schools, including special ed. East Meadow, the high school, and special ed. That would include staffing, supplies, materials, those types of things. So 70% of our budget goes to that. Transportation accounts, 12%. The district offices, 3%. Nursing, maintenance. So you can see where the vast majority of the budget goes to the schools and supporting the students. So one way we close the deficit, we worked with town leadership, and they've indicated that they can give us an additional $600,000. And they've been very generous in the last three years, and they've provided us that additional $600,000 for the last three years. So that is helping us close that 1.4 million-dollar gap, in addition to an additional $552,000 that we've made through these costs, which are, gave a remaining deficit of $335,000. So to get to the additional $552,000, this is what we did on top of the six. And the $600,000, as well as the 500 we already slashed, is what we did. We cut two FTEs, basically, the retirements and resignations were not in the paid positions. Reduced funding for pressure valment, which was that information I showed you with previous slides. Reducing supply material, eliminating some stigons, some technology, looking at our contracted services, and reduce some technology repairs and service. And I suppose we're reducing some custodial. Did you get that? Yeah?
Can I ask what those 2.5 FTEs are?
I don't have the top of my head.
We've, we're not, we're not in a position to publicly identify the positions yet.
Got it. I got it. Thank you.
So after that $600,000 given us from the town, and additional 500 we cut, we're still left with a remaining deficit of $335,000. Well, this is where we're going to be working with the town to see if they can give us a little bit more support, so that we don't have to cut additional.
Okay, so can we start with questions and stuff? And as I'm going through this, it's, oh, you're not done yet, okay.
I just want to show you the impact if we have to continue to cut the additional $335,000, whether we have to continue to advocate for funding from the town, and look into what else that might look like. So if we have to make additional cuts, this is where we see we can cut. It would be cutting about 5% of our staff. Some of them would be going from full-time to part-time, including all of these specific areas. Elementary positions, professional social workers, a special education teacher, administration, administrative assistants, costs every, every job. And then we're going to do some technology and software. So these are the cuts we're making in the initial budget. So this is the last slide. If we were to go with the initial cuts that we made with the town, with the additional $335,000 given to us, our increase in budget would be 4.05 from last year. If the town, and we can't support the additional $300,000, our ask would be an additional 1.63 over last year's budget. So these are two specific budgets. One, if somehow we can, if we got deficit by getting some support from the town, would be 4%. And if we can't, then we'll only ask for 1.63. So those are the two specific scenarios we're looking at. I have the copies of the actual department sheets. You can take a look at them. So that's all we have, and you can ask any questions. And I was going to have Mr. Dorming give me a hand if we have any questions.
So you all are welcome, because this is a hearing. This is for public give and take. So if you have questions, thoughts, we may not be able to answer them, but we can certainly hear them. We will have to identify yourselves by name and address. And, you know, we can, I can't guarantee that we'll have back and forth, but we can certainly have discussion. We've been working with this, so it's not all unfamiliar to us. So some of us might have questions. Like, I know I've got a bunch right now, just that we might rattle off quickly as we're working through this. But this is a working meeting. So just so we're all clear, square. Yeah? Good. Okay. Questions I'm thinking of, as we're looking at this at the first time? Is there anything that we can do to increase our revenue to help with this for offsets? I'm thinking transportation. Is there anything that, I mean, I know it's, we're talking drips and drabs, but hear me out. Please don't shoot the messenger at this point. But transportation, is there anything that we can do to ask those Smith College, I mean, Smith Volk students to pay a fee? Pathfinder students to pay a fee? Any Gramby residents to pay a fee for, like, have we ever discussed fee for busing? Is it something we can do?
I can take two parts of that. So the Smith Vocational, we're required as a district to provide their transportation.
Okay.
Pathfinder, it is part of the town's allotment, which is a separate article, but doesn't impact our budget. The third, are you talking about charging our students to ride the buses?
Just spitballing, just an idea.
Yep, we haven't, we haven't looked into that.
Uh huh. I mean, I'm just thinking, like, if there's something that we can do, if the town can't come up with another $335,000, what is, at this point, I feel like we need to start thinking outside of the box, right? So.
So one thing that is a little bit different with our transportation is our $335,000 deficit, transportation isn't a part of that. The town provides a separate article.
But a lot of the numbers in here talk about transportation and how much it's increased.
Yes, because that is a total ask of the towns. The town is being impacted by those transportation costs, which are, that increase is all specific to special ed. Our regular transportation is a fixed cost for one more year. We would, we, I think it would need to be a discussion with the town. If there was a fee and it brought down the town's transportation cost, would they consider providing that difference back to the schools to close that deficit?
In my head, it's so much easier than that. It would be revenue into the school, and like, you know, try and.
Right.
I mean, we had briefly talked about it, because I'd actually done a little bit of research on what it would cost to, how much it would cost to have buses. So I have a few ideas that I talked to other communities, what they charge, and, you know, quite extensive. Some of them charge up to $400 a year for kids to ride buses. It would probably be about, you know, $15,000 or $20,000. It wouldn't be as huge impact on us, but it's certainly something we can certainly consider.
To be very clear and very open, this is not my, you know, I'm just trying to, this number scares me. And it's devastating. And I know the town is doing what they can, and I'm just trying to think, is there something that we can do?
One of the things we are considering, we're looking to look at our elementary school. We have some programs that we're looking to develop at the elementary school. And now, you know, it may not be this year, but certainly next year. Our special ed coordinator is looking with other schools to see what kind of programs they're looking for. So we're looking to develop a socially-emotional program for our students here. And that could be a way for us to generate revenue by bringing institutions out of districts for those, for that. And that's something we're considering, and hopefully have it flushed out before the end of the year, so that we can see what that looks like for us. So bringing programs in like that to support students out of district, you know, is significant, maybe $50,000 to $60,000 of students. And that's something we consider, considerable. Again, you have to develop these programs, and it costs money, because you have to hire some of the other programs and buy curriculum and stuff. We are looking at that right now at the elementary level.
Okay.
And it is, it is, you know, a lot of times, I know people want to get grants, but a lot of times, the grants have put in a lot of restrictions. I've talked to several people, you can't get a grant for any issues. So if you want to get a grant, you gotta, you know, get a grant for computer science. But if they don't let you buy a teacher, you can only do certain parameters. So grants are all well and good, but you really, really can't generally what you can say with grants and grants. There's not a lot of grant money to pay for salaries. And that becomes, I know people think that that's the case, but it is not in many instances. And if you do find a grant that will fund a teacher, it won't be sustained. We have to somehow get it in your budget in the next couple of years to do that. So it's not something you can do all the time. So really, it is, it's a matter of slow growth for taxes for everybody in the Commonwealth with the rise in the cost of inflation. So it's going to pinch everybody on either side, if it comes to this issue, for sure.
So just to recap, this last fiscal year, we lost eight positions?
Over two, over two years.
So that is.
Well, can you go back a couple of slides? It was a list. It goes further.
From the past two years.
Those are, that's over the past two years.
Okay, so we lost eight, 10, over the last two years. And our best-case scenario is we're going to lose another two and a half. Our worst-case scenario is we're going to lose another seven.
Yes.
On top of the 10. So 17 positions in the last three years.
Yes.
Okay.
We're doing our best to not cut teachers. Doing our best.
Got it. So we are definitely walking that tightrope.
We are. We truly are.
But yeah, 17 cuts in three years is rough.
Again, that's why we no longer level budget, or reduce it slightly.
Can I just follow up on that, please? So in terms of how we're funded through Chapter 70 through.
I'm going to have to put first to them.
Per student, per student funding. I imagine there's some equivalent loss of enrollment, and loss of funding through Chapter 70 that might go along with that. I mean, any one of us here, I'm sure, doesn't want to lose direct services to students. But at some point, with about 80% of your budget going to staff, well, including benefits.
Correct.
Right.
About 70, 70, 60.
Where do you cut, right?
And so, yeah, we have had a decline in enrollment. But the difficulty is, is it's not an equivalent. We don't, again, this is just said in a hypothetical way. So if we had 45th graders, that would be two classes. You don't lose enough to lose a whole class. That, if we lost 20 students, they're spread out from K to 12. And there is no one place that it's impacted, say, oh, well, this is easy. We lost 20 students, this person services 20 students, we can remove. Because it, the ripple effect into, and then the high school as well, you know, there has lost students. But you still have to run those required classes. And so nothing has been enough of a loss to just simply say, okay, it's an equivalent.
And we also seem to have, if you look in our enrollment dashboard, Liz, you'll see it's almost comical at this point. When they go for our October 1st Sims, our numbers dip, and we end 15, 20, sometimes 30 students higher. So they take an October 1 number, but we have students come in throughout the year, so we end up higher. So our number is never exactly what our enrollment is. It's a snapshot in time. So what good is October 1st? I'd rather them do January 1st or February 1st.
They do, there is a method for collecting enrollment over the course of the year. So that, that does factor in. I guess what I was trying to get at is, DESI doesn't factor in that if you lose one kid per grade, or two kids per grade, and you lose, you know, 24 kids overall, you still. or two kids per grade, and you lose, you know, twenty-four kids overall, you still lose that funding. Doesn't mean you stop providing those services.
Correct.
Exactly.
Yes, exactly. And that's the situation that all these districts are in.
It is.
Those costs haven't changed because it's not as equivalent as it's, it's easy to say, oh, it's enrollment, so it goes down. It's not that actual equivalent.
And even if this district wanted to replace those students with school choice, you're only talking fifteen thousand instead of the actual, what would the minimum be? Eight, around somewhere in the neighborhood of eight thousand, and then it goes up, right? So you're not, even with school choice, it's not like you're replacing the money. You're still in deficit.
Right, and yes, Mr. Dorming will state, you know, at the high school and the junior high schools, some of the teachers are teaching rate seven to twelve, all right? So it's not, you know, they're not designated just high school to sell, you know, middle school teachers. And at one point, we were able to do that, but now our teachers are going seven to twelve. And it becomes an issue when you look at what it, what their certification, what did that look like for highly qualified teachers? We really have to remain cognizant of that as well, because we have to make sure that our teachers and our students are, are being matched to the right programs. And I can't, we don't want a history teacher teaching somebody geometry and anything.
Were the two of you at the Ways and Means, the joint Ways and Means? So I wasn't able to go either.
We, I was initially going, but then.
But even if, even if, right? As Karen Spolka said, she wants to open up, looking at how rural schools are funded. We're still looking at at least a two-year legislative cycle before that happens. And it will be longer because they'll want to create a committee, right? To, to travel around the state and look at it. So we're probably looking at five years down the road, minimum, before they manage to do something about the inequities with rural aid versus the thirty-seven or so districts that get student opportunity at twenty. It doesn't mean our students aren't any more deserving or amazing. But there's no short-term solution.
Any of you all have any questions? All right, you can go first, just name and, name and address.
Kathy Baker, London, New Kendall Street. I, I understand that most of the income comes from the, the state and the town. How much comes from the federal government, and how much of that do we have to worry about given proposed changes to the Department of Education?
Well, those are some entitlement grants that we have. We don't have those answers right now because we don't know.
Sure.
We really don't have an answer for you. We can give you what we had in the past, but I don't know if we're gonna receive that funding or what that's gonna look like. We don't even know how it's gonna be allocated to us, but maybe Mr. Dorming can speak about.
Yeah, just in general, like, what percentage of the budget comes from those that might be affected?
Um, so my projections for next year with our main title grants is about three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And we factor that in already in closing that deficit, which has a certain risk to it with the volatility of some of the things that are going on in Washington. That's part, right. Part of that one point six million is our three hundred and seventy-five thousand in estimates for federal grants. As Ms. Rixon said, there are some other grants that come up that, throughout the year, that we, DESI will release grants, and we may apply for them if they're fitting some of our programmatic needs. We haven't accounted for them yet because, you know, those won't get released until the new fiscal year. And that, the numbers, those federal grants are based on enrollment. So as our enrollment goes down, we see those going down a little bit. They're not, they haven't been dramatic swings, so it's fairly stable for us. As long as the Department of Ed's opportunities stays stable for us.
So, I'm not a financial person. I've said this before, but I do try to at least pay attention to the conversation at the federal level. And entitlement grants, the title grants were established and written into law, constitution. And so saying you're not gonna provide those money is one thing. But actually working through the system and taking that before the Supreme Court, which surprisingly has been resistant to some of these cuts that are being spewed in the media. And so I think we can be somewhat hopeful, at least there. I mean, I, so, but if you dismantle the Department of Ed, chances are what? The federal government will take some amount of money out of there that they think they're saving, and will put SpaceX rockets up into the universe, I guess. Uh, I don't know, but anyway. And then the rest of the money will come to the states to disperse as, as would probably, by and large, be normal.
Right, and that's, I can't read the tea leaves in this any better than anybody else, but it may be a block, more of a block grant format than categorical grants the way they have. And then if that is the case, DESI would, the State Department of Education would determine how those were sent to the districts. Again, my prediction, for what it's worth, is that DESI already has formulas and kind of goals in mind with the way they're using those funds. So I wouldn't see a significant, I wouldn't imagine a significant change in the way they allocated it, so.
Go ahead.
I'm Alina Smith, forty-six Eastern Street. So I have a few questions, but the first one's not coming off of Kathy's question, one of my questions.
I know, yeah.
If you really. So I assume that these numbers are estimates, that the real budget isn't set until summer, is that correct? Or are these, have been set?
Until, it's not set for us until we vote on it, which I believe is April eleventh, and then it has to be voted on by the town, which, you know, is, I think, town meeting for us. First one is in May, and they always vote to split, and then, so we'll use, we'll use June.
I always feel like in the summer months, we all wait for these concrete numbers to come in, is that correct?
So, correct. So the, chapter seventy will be voted on, and it's, past couple of years, the legislature hasn't had the final budget until July. And so that minimum aid per pupil has fluctuated. We built our budget last year on sixty dollars per pupil, but it ended up at one oh four. So that, that's that volatility until the end. And then we don't get our federal grants estimates till August because that, the federal fiscal year starts October one. So there are, yeah, so there is a lot of projection and a lot of estimates into where we are right now.
So I think that, one of my understanding is the six hundred thousand is something that is to be voted on at the town level, correct? On town floor?
So the past couple of years, it has been included in the school budgets article, not as a separate item. So that will depend on what the select board puts forward and the finance committee recommends.
I do remember it used to be three hundred thousand, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a three oh five.
It was part of two and a half.
Yeah. And then now still possibly needing to ask for an additional three thirty-five. So it's a little under a million above what is allocated from the town responsibility. This town, the town responsibility increasing to that six point something percent, does that help? Is that much more in coming from the town revenue? Not big numbers coming from the town?
It was four hundred thousand more on the town's required, the required allocation. And, and that's the part that, the only piece that's really growing is what the DESI formula is requiring. Of all the small municipalities, is the burden is shifting to the town.
Correct, that's why I'm just saying that the town is getting to be more responsible. If the federal is trying to shifting off and putting it to the state, and I did hear state wanting to allocate funds to offset grants, which grants are never guaranteed every year, funding, how much can they really support all the monies that have been coming in in the past for those grants? I still see a town, larger town responsibility, you know, within the budgets. And I know that we were talking about classroom sizes and student enrollment, and I know that there's, you know, maximum that you can put students in the classroom, which you would never want to max out. But being that the high school and junior high high school have only two hundred and ninety students, are there minimums in the classrooms that don't, classes can't be run if there's three, four, five students?
We try to keep the classes, you know, I don't like to run a class less than ten because we want to make sure that, you know, there're gonna be exceptions occasionally for somebody that's taken an AP class, the, the one-offs. But generally, for example, we have one Spanish teacher, so those classes tend to be very large. English classes tend to be large. So it's really just, some of the special classes might be a little bit lower, but that would just be AP, those pre-ops and things like that. But generally, try, we try to keep them, you know, within time.
I did see that one of the retirements are being, you know, restaffed. But I know that we just had a cut in social studies at the high school level, and one of the retirements will be in the same department. Is that, is that true? I mean, I know one of the, in middle school, social studies is retiring, but I wouldn't want.
Number FY twenty-six.
So I was hoping that positions that are not being replaced would not be in the same areas of positions that have been cut so recently. Does that make sense?
A lot of times, there's people with multiple certifications. So that's why you might see one person teaching a class one, one time, and then as juggling, when you look at people's certifications and stuff, so you might have someone teaching one class and then another class completely different.
Yeah, because I know that they're allowed to go twenty-five percent out of their subject area. I just wanted to make sure that you're not, one department's not specifically.
And we're definitely cognizant, for sure, moving forward. We definitely will, and I appreciate that you said that, Ms. Bartel, because, you know, if it does look like we're cutting, I'll, I'll lose you socials. And I know where my saying we're cutting socials, please, we're not cutting socials. But if we add, that person may be also certified in English. So those types of things may happen. So that, 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 that could be, as you said. But no, we're gonna be cognizant of, you know, looking at the schedules that have been developed by the principals, and what does that look like? And then class sizes, and really where, you know, where, be the least impact for the students.
And the competency determination that is yet to be settled, by the way, will require two years of whatever it's going to be in U.S. history, right?
History's three.
Three. That's a whole nother matter. So if anybody's in touch with, if, if you're so inclined to reach out and comment, you can go on DESI's website, they've proposed the competency determinations, and they are still accepting input, public comment, it's in writing, if you will.
Any other questions?
I appreciate everybody's questions.
Any other questions from the committee?
It's the, one of the worst times to be doing some of the best work that's done in any community. And I think, I think we're fortunate to have folks that are dedicated to the work and trying to do their best to, to juggle. And again, numbers are never my thing. But it's heartbreaking when you think about, you know, how deserving every kid, child, student in our schools, all of our schools are, and the magic that people who work in these schools manage to do each year with less. And so, thank you. I guess that's all I have to say about that.
And I want to thank our, oh, you have another question?
I'm sorry, I wanted to know why I should.
All right.
My question, Matt Misajic, on sixteen Green Meadow Lane. I've just sitting here and looking at the pie chart. Now I have a better understanding of why our athletics budget is one and a half percent. I just wanted to raise, just about concern, but there was an incident in JV field involving a small brush fire. And I was told that there is no money to really cover that to support the JV baseball players. And in the fields as a whole, just coming on the backs of coaches, parents, there are some here today who have helped out over the years, many years, much of our own money, time, and there's still, you know, piles of dirt in the field being turned over on the JV side, and we have a first game on Monday. Just in general, and I totally understand budgets, but we don't have the heavy machinery required to get these fields in a proper condition just to start the season. Maintaining them's okay, like, there's a lot of my equipment in the baseball shed that we maintain the fields with.
So I was hoping that this, this would be part of our regular meeting. This is the budget open hearing. So we'll.
I wasn't sure.
No, no, I was gonna, that's what I was just getting ready to say. So, so you can say that in just a moment. We'll revisit that in just a moment. This is the public hearing solely on budget right now.
Solely, okay.
Yours is.
I didn't know if it was all tied in because.
No, it's, it's, no, it's.
Okay.
Athletics are certainly a part of our budget.
What does the budget go to for the athletics? Audrey Hunter, one eighty.
Say it again.
Like, some of that says one point five percent on the pie chart.
Yeah, one point five is the tot, is.
What is that?
That's the total, coaches.
So pays for coaches.
Coaches, athletic, athletic director, uniforms, equipment, memberships.
They blew out their shin pads, and there was, we had no money. It was a mere, it was the coach. We had to send parents home to go get equipment at home because there was no money in the budget to buy shin pads for the JV baseball players. So I was just wondering where that money went to.
So there, there's supplies, if, if there's, so again, these are specifics that we could talk about later, but again, supplies, registrations, we, you know, pay dues to the MIAA, the state organization, the PBIAC, which is the local pioneer valley for the leagues that we belong to, plays official, pay officials. We have some sports that require an athletic trainer or an EMT on site, we pay those.
Because I know we pay, shouldn't we tell them something for them to play? And that, that covered.
It's fractional of what, of what the overall budget.
Portion of the overall athletic budget.
Oh, that's part of that.
Yep, so in those off, there's the offsets, which was a portion, so one point seven six million is our offsets. All the athletic pieces are part of that larger number.
So that's actually just something after what I was driving towards, so.
I just have one more question, if it's allowed.
Name and, name and address.
Alina Smith, forty-six Eastern Street. So are we still one-on-one to Chromebooks for next year?
Yes.
I only ask because I see there's a reduction, and I remember the Chromebooks coming during COVID, during, by the time, through grants and other things that were developed. But that was four years ago, so I'd imagine technology is starting to gray and, you know, gray.
We, we cycled it too, yeah, so he just took, you know, we should be, we should be fine.
Okay. Just checking.
Yeah, we have taken the one-to-one device into account for our repair and replacement.
Okay, last chance, because I'm gonna close the budget forum and then open our regular meeting. Any additional questions? Please stay for the, you know, we have visitor comment for the regular part of the meeting, which I'll read in just a moment. But we're gonna adjourn the public hearing. So just so we're clear for visitor comments, when we get to that, again, you may have that, we may ask a question, but there won't be back and forth like there is during the hearing because of open meeting laws. Okay, so if we're all set with that, we're gonna adjourn the public hearing for the budget, and we are gonna now call our regularly scheduled meeting to order. First up is the minutes from March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, which are in our folder. All set? Okay, resuming our meeting. First up is the consent agenda minutes from March eighteenth. They are in our folder, as everyone had a chance to review. Any question or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
Make a motion to accept minutes from March eighteen, two thousand twenty-five.
Second?
I will second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is warrant number fifty-eight, which was going around for signature. Any questions or comments on the warrant? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
Make a motion to approve warrant zero zero five eight.
Have a second?
Do second.
All those in favor? Aye. Liz, did you say aye?
No, she didn't.
Okay, I didn't hear you. All right, next up.
Can I say yes?
Next up, visitors' comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included for the record of the meeting. And we do have some visitors. So Matt, why don't you come on up, and you can sit at the end of the table next to Todd.
Hello.
Name and address.
Name and address. Matt Misajic, sixteen Green Meadow Lane.
Excellent. What brings you here?
Uh, I am brought here on behalf of the wonderful young men and younger fellows who play baseball in the town of Granby, both varsity and JV, and also softball as well, varsity and JV, and just the conditions of the fields, understanding what budget we're really working with in a small town, and I totally understand it. And a lot of the work falls on the backs of parents. And a lot of the work falls on the backs of parents, students, friends, neighbors, father-in-laws, to get things up and running. We have fields that got turned over, uh, two days before our season started. The JV field still has clumps of dirt.
JV baseball?
Baseball strewn around the whole perimeter of the outfield infield line. Of course, there was a small brush fire. There was a lot of ruts. Things have sort of been repaired. It's a bit dangerous for kids to be running around because the field is so uneven. The varsity diamond and on both baseball and softball are probably more important. Not to say that safety isn't important for the youngsters, but I was told by head coach, was today, that I don't believe there was dirt delivered to the field infield mix since about two thousand seventeen. So we have gullies in the field, so when the fall balls hit, it literally doesn't roll flat. It rolled into like a gully. So we just need a, dirt is a very important thing. But what I would really like to know is if there's a way or somebody willing to volunteer time at the beginning of each season for spring sports to turn over field, remove the debris, the thatched, the grass that I don't think's been touched in, I don't know how long. The outfield comes up in clumps when you run or a ball hits it in certain conditions on certain days. And just overall get it into a state where school staff can maintain it easily, put chalk down for lines. I have equipment in the shed. I don't mind dragging the field at the end of practices or before games. It's, it's my equipment. I really don't mind doing it, but I, it's, I don't have the heavy machinery needed to really get an entire softball field together or a varsity baseball field together. It's very, very difficult when you have like shovels and physical labor without, without the heavy machinery. It's nearly impossible. And I just want the kids to be proud of something and have something to play on that's a proper field, that you don't feel like you're getting snickered at when an opposing bus shows up. Not to say that they don't have their own problems in other towns, but the varsity fields are especially bad. And I just hope we can find a way to get some kind of assistance at the beginning of the season to have those set up so we can, we can just roll in.
Okay. Any questions for Matt?
I, I have a question, I think for Todd. Is field maintenance part of the in-kind or chargebacks that we're paying to the town? And so is this something the town might be nimble enough to come and take care of?
So they did. I was, so this part of my role is new. This year, I reached out to the town facilities department and the highway department to address the fields for the beginning of the season. I finally was able to get ahold of the highway department. They came on the Friday before the season started to try to turn over the fields. They did, the, the clumps of grass, those things were left there from their original work on the field. The week before, this is, please don't perceive this as excuses, but there was ice on the field two, three days before they came. Like it was just too wet, according to the highway department superintendent. Getting Friday was the earliest that they, they could get out there. I have been in talking with the athletic director and the highway department superintendent that we are better off doing this work in October, late October, early November. And to get ourselves on a schedule for that field maintenance to prepare them for the winter so that we're not trying to remove all of that crabgrass and all of that stuff when the fields have just thawed and it still has frost underneath.
I was actually going to ask that because that would, that is a much better strategic.
So, so we, Mr. Dubuque and I have been talking extensively on, on the field issues to try to do what we can given our limitations. But not, we're not ignoring.
Mr. Dubuque is the.
The athletic director.
Director, okay, so.
And I, we, we totally understand that the budget's hard and it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a tricky situation. It, it really is.
So I lived in Hatfield for thirty years and my daughters played all the rec sports coming up. All that maintenance was on parents. We created a field hockey field when there was, a, a new elementary school was built where our field hockey field was. We spent the summer watering that, seeding it, watering it, you know, it was, I get what you're coming from.
I just want to make it like, and, and I think just overall make it easier for like, it's not such a big stress on Todd or Dylan or, or the ma, the maintenance staff who's assigned to do it. Like they, they should really just be able to go out there, line the fields and, and everyone's happy.
Especially if the town's charging us back for, and for caring for the fields. And I understand that the time is very short, so because kids have schedules that they have to play. But DPWs, I, I would hope, I would imagine is, is, you know, working with the school to try to make this all ready for the kids to get out there. You don't mind me calling them kids, I'm sorry, our young people to get out there.
They, we've had the conversations and said he's, he's got his responsibilities and his primary responsibilities are not our fields. So managing to get that in, again, with the timing. Mother nature has not been cooperating this spring.
So it might be a good thing for our parents of athletes to call the DPW and just say.
I don't necessarily think that that will. That's going to get us the results we'd like.
No, that's not going to, that, we're still new to. That may have the adverse effect.
I think that we certainly have our work cut out to get that JV baseball field in as playable condition as we can for this season, given the impact of the brush fire and the firefighting equipment that was on it. You know, there, that's, that's the biggest hurdle. We would have, I believe our staff would have been okay if we didn't have that considerable damage done. The day it happened, I reached out to the town interim town administrator. We were told that the recommendation, well, it's not a determination I get to make, but I asked, would it be something that would be an insurance claim or to be handled within the DPW or one of, and I was told it would be done by the DPW. They came, they filled in the ruts to what they could, given the conditions. So we were exploring the avenues that we could. I was on the field today, like I was trying to figure out how can we get material to take care of those ruts, those tire tracks, the areas that have been just scraped down to, you know, below the, where all the grass and everything has been removed. So the team is on it. We're doing the, we're trying to get the material out there. It's not, see. Mr. Dubuque is off.
Their first game is home on Wednesday, uh, Thursday, like two days.
Oh, two days, oh boy.
So it's more than just the baseball. I mean, I, my daughter plays varsity softball and every day after practice, they spend about forty-five minutes raking, so.
Yep, I know, I've seen everybody out there, JV coach as well. And we were all dragging, I, I dragged all the fields for everyone last year whenever I, whenever I was possible that I could.
Yeah.
Grass is looking great though in my fields.
It is. I have a cynical thought that I'm going to keep to myself.
I appreciate you bringing this forward. We will, you know, I think Todd and his team are doing the best that they can with the situation that we've got.
And if, and if something, like if, if we can hit this in the fall, I mean, I'm sure everyone will be on board that has, kids that play varsity, JV sports aboard. I certainly am for sure.
And maybe it's something that we bring forward to the booster club and see if we try to do a targeted fundraiser for the baseball fields, you know, get some dirt, whatever. You know, you guys were integral part of it and I know they, we had people for the soccer field, you know, doing some things and that was sort of helped with the booster club and.
And we will be having a baseball related fundraiser as well.
So maybe we need to shift focus a little bit and try to get some of that stuff done and, you know, it's, there's always things. There's a group of people that want to try to get lights on the soccer field. There's people that want to do baseball stuff, you know, it's, we have great townspeople and we have a lot of really invested community members and parents of school kids here. And honestly, I don't think we would be where we are if we didn't have them. And, you know, really, Matt, thank you for all that you do for, you know, you're working all the time at the snack shack and you and your wife were instrumental for the booster club for a long time. So it's, it's not unnoticed, so I appreciate it and I really do appreciate you bringing this forward.
Thank you. Should I bring up my whole proposal for an entire turf field for the whole complex now?
If you can bring the check with it, let us know.
It'd be a moneymaker.
And Jen, I remind myself all the time, I have a lot to learn about Granby.
I didn't mean for that to be quite so snarky, but.
I actually appreciate it because I try to remind myself.
There's a lot of inner workings, it would, it really would not be, there's a chain of command and we're not gonna try, we're not going to encourage people to make trouble for us, but, yeah.
I think good troubles, good trouble, but, okay.
Perhaps not. Any other comments?
File that where it belongs.
For visitors, anybody? Okay, moving on. Cole is not here. New business, first is the vote for policy ACAB, ACRAC and JICK, which is going back to the twenty twenty-one version. Those are all in our folder if you want to take a minute and just, excuse me, look at them.
Do you want me to talk to that just briefly or did we do that last time?
We talked about it last time, I'm just giving everyone a chance to revisit, refresh. So I just want to make sure that these are MASC, these are the MASC policies as they stand, going back to the twenty twenty-one version because of Title IX changes.
That's right, that's right, so.
And Title IX is part of what would be considered DEI.
And they were all just rewritten in December of twenty-four to be in line with the newest Title IX requirements.
That have now been rolled back.
Fortunately for Mass, we had it right the last time changes were made in Title IX. So we're, we didn't have to do a lot of work to get the policies back out to school districts.
Any questions or comments on what we see here? I'm not seeing. You have any, there's a couple typos, it looks like maybe, maybe it's grammar. Anyway, if there aren't any questions or comments, are you comfortable with going ahead and voting? This is our second read, which would be where we're acceptable to vote. If there's questions or if we want to wait for George, who should be back for our next meeting, we can do that.
Well, this just brings us in line with federal law, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And incorporates requirements of the Massachusetts Constitution and law. So which provides some more protection for folks than, so you can provide more stringent protections with your state laws, but not less than what the federal government provides.
Excellent. So if we're all set and no further discussion, I'll take the motion.
So I'd make a motion, do you want to do them as a group or one at a time, Jen?
I think a group is fine.
I'd make a motion to approve ACAB sexual harassment. Make sure I get them all. AC, which is non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation, along with AC dash R, which are the regulations that are required to go with that policy. And JC, which, JICK, which is harassment of students. So that was a motion to approve.
Can I have a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Next, continuing business, vote for per same, wow, that word is payment. Payment procedures, section DGA and DK. Oh, I stand corrected. Going back to new business, donation for Serenity Yoga.
We just received a check for two hundred and eighty-five dollars to our yoga program and Serenity Yoga would like to give us a check for two hundred and eighty-five dollars and the money will be deposited into student activities.
That's amazing. Thank you to Serenity Yoga. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Serenity Yoga.
And Janie's been doing a great job. Anytime we get a donation, she's sending out thank yous to the folks, so.
Appreciate that, Janie, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the donation from Serenity Yoga.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Now it's continuing business and voting on payment procedures, section DGA and DK.
Do you want me to talk to that since I worked on it with George? This is where we had questions for the committee to make decisions in the differences that appeared in the MASC policy models and what was currently in place in Granby. These are, they're both related and it is a school committee decision. I can say more if you'd like.
So just to make sure I'm understanding, so we would not have to vote for, in our consent agenda, for the warrants anymore or just be one person?
Okay, so if you accept the model language, the committee would have to vote by a roll call vote to designate a single member to sign the warrants. The warrants would then still be listed on the next agenda of the school committee as notification that they were approved. And I guess we would accept at that point.
Do we have to do?
No, you do not. It's, it's, it's just an option that's available. And if this, having everybody sign is working and is efficient and gets the bills paid on time, you do not have to do it. It's totally optional.
Is it working?
Yeah, this is the model that I'm going to use, so.
Right. I am, yeah, that's what I was going to say, I'm kind of comfortable keeping it with the way we've been doing it. So, so this was part of it where we, was looped in and there was question about it.
That's right.
From the last one, so this is technically our second read. So we would need it to just revert back to what we had.
So nothing has been changed?
Okay, great.
So if we don't make any motion, the existing policies stay in place?
Amen to that, perfect. All right, school choice numbers.
After the last meeting, I went back and added the two school choice seats to grade twelve like you asked.
Thank you.
These are the new numbers. We're looking to bring an additional thirty school choice seats to our students next year in grades one, three, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven and twelve.
So three students for grade one, four students for grade three, two students, students for grade six, five students for grade seven, seven students for grade nine, five students for grade ten, two students grade eleven and two students grade twelve. And that's for school year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Correct.
Okey dokey. Any questions or comments on those numbers? I will make a comment. This is for, at this time, we, if these numbers fill out quickly or if we're hearing a lot or if there's a lot of requests, we can always revisit. So this is not, this may not be the only time we see or have a discussion or vote on school choice. So if there are no further discussions, I will take the motion.
Make a motion to accept school choice availability numbers for twenty-five, twenty-six.
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, superintendent's search. Go ahead, Todd. Yep?
Um, I didn't, so we've forwarded the two names and then I think today we had discussed whether a site visit was planned. And then also the interview questions was another part of your agenda for today.
So for site visits, March thirty-first to April fourth. That's for that, remind me how this part works? Is that for one of us to go? Remind me how this part works, is that for one of us to go there?
I think s- different uh searches have done it differently, I.
Right.
I've been on a s- search where I was part of a larger committee uh that visited a district. Um, and then there had been single uh representatives.
Okay. So what do you all um think?
About the escort?
Oh, about the um site visits and how to um, how to do it. So we have really only. What, because one of the finalists is um Mary Jane, so there wouldn't be a need for a site visit for that. Because she's here, as I understand it.
I think you'd need to still formally perform a site visit. So that both candidates are treated the same in that regard.
Mean at least offer.
Just wouldn't have to go anywhere to do it. Um, there's also the option of. Uh, if you want to do site visits, right? Um, but everybody has difficulty finding that time, you could do virtual site visits. Um, I think my experience seeing an awful lot of these done over the years is. Where they really become valuable is if someone is um out of state. Or it's an unknown quantity, um, you want to see some great innovations that they bragged about, et cetera. Many districts are foregoing site visits. If they don't see something that they really want to learn more about, and then there's others that just do it as a matter of routine. Um, probably at least two people would be a good idea, school committee member, maybe somebody from the search committee. Um, or someone else, maybe two school committee members, um, I know we sometimes have trouble with that in terms of all of our schedules.
With the way the cur- the committee is made up with George not act necessarily able to attend. To meeting, two people would be for him, so we can't have two school committee members.
But he's still a member of.
He's still the, he's still a member, I just.
Yep, just the appearance of.
Right.
Yep.
Um, he is still active, I don't mean to give off that, just I, um, I just feel like. Our committee for the past several meetings because of his orders has been three members, so I just don't want to have, um.
Well, visiting. Visiting and collecting information is, is not. Legally a violation of the open meeting law, as long as you're not deliberating, you do that, take your notes and come back.
Right.
And have that deliberation at the table. Um, but I appreciate your concern for the appearance of.
Yeah, optics are important.
I um have a, eh, you know, I wouldn't say strong, but I have a personal feeling around. Um, site visits generally, especially since we have two candidates. Um, when you, a- and again, it's something I've done, so. You know, you're gonna see, it's like having letters of recommendation. You're going to see the people that they want you to see, talk to the people that they want you to talk to, and you're gonna hear good things. Um, you know, what may, again, where, where you might have keen interest is if. Um, again, there's some. New programming, something exciting happening in the district that this person ha- has been part of creating. Uh, that you might want to see.
I also feel like they could bring that forward with examples when they come for their interview.
I mean, I'll go however the committee wants, but I'm not sure that, um, you know, it's something that has to happen.
So I was part of um a previous search committee and we did the site visits, um. Virtually, and honestly, I didn't see much value from, from them. And so I don't know if we're required to have to do them.
You're not.
If, I mean, if we. Does it make us look bad if we don't do it? I'm just, I'm, I'm unsure. I'm unsure.
I think in my humble opinion, the most important part is the candidates, both of them, their site visit here to the district. And what they glean from that and what we are able to get from that, um, experience through the interview process.
I feel like the visit for the candidates here is more important than us going.
Agree there, I agree, yep.
So if we can agree with that, then the site visits that we're talking about are for the candidates vision, visiting here. And again, I don't know that our interim person needs to have a.
If you.
It can be off, it can be offered.
If you do it for one, you should do it for another, she may want to get into classrooms and. See things she doesn't get to see every day.
And if there is a um community. Ti- uh, the time for meeting with parents and community members.
Okay.
So that would be available to both.
Okay, alright, so we need to pick those, um, those. Dates, so we have to reach out, you know, Todd, you've been um working with both. So I guess reach out and see when that can work and then do we have any dates from the committee that we are not able to do, um. Do anything. We have a committee meeting next week on the first.
I don't think I'd be available on the thirty-first.
So are we sticking to the timeline that we see here on our agenda or do you, are we also looking at the week of March thirty-first and April fourth?
That is the da- it says site visits, March, March thirty-first, April fourth.
So we would have the candidates do their site visits and then interview them the same evening?
That's the next line, it says finalists interviews underneath.
The following week. So one week for site visits and then the following week for interviews?
That's how we have it laid out, so that's where, you know, I'm trying to, that's what we're trying to determine, right, how we want to go forward.
Sure, I, again, I'll go with whatever works best for the committee, but I think that. Um, if. It's a typical day in the life of a superintendent, if you have a site visit during the day, if you meet with parents and have a meet and greet and then have an interview. Um, and I'm okay with doing that the week earlier or the second week. It sounds like we would just need to pick either one day for both to happen at the same time. And with two schools in close proximity, you could theoretically not have crossover. Um, or we could pick two dates, I guess it's up to the committee, um.
Dave, I'm gonna ask you a question, there's a special town meeting on April eighth? What is that in regards to, is that for West Street? Okay, so we will not be doing um April eighth?
And I just heard, Michael, you're not available on the thirty-first?
Uh, not the thirty-first, but I'm pretty flexible the rest of the dates.
Um, and that first week in April, the thirty-first through the. Fourth available, I believe only on Monday and Thursday that week at night.
So that's not gonna work, so we're in the, cause I, um, thirty-first doesn't work for me or for Mike. We have a school committee meeting on Tuesday, so can we combine that and have it be part of?
So Tuesdays is the budget forum, is just, that's the only thing that we have.
Okay. I thought that was the eleventh.
The eleventh will be the vote on the.
Got it.
On the final budget.
Which is a Friday.
How about the seventh of April, is anybody interested in that day?
Yeah, the fifteenth is when we'll vote on the budget. Yep. Nothing on the eleventh.
Okay. Alright, on the seventh. Um. As long as it's in the evening after, um, like six-thirty or later, I can do it on the seventh.
Well, obviously I asked because I'm also free that day, so. We need three people. Can I do the seventh?
The seventh? Yeah, what time?
Anytime in the evening, anytime after si- like six-thirty, normal time would wor- work better for me.
Alright, let's uh.
Would we do two interviews that night, like the six-thirty to? How, however long you want to give the candidates, are you thinking one hour?
That's what we did last time, I think, right, we did six, six-thirty, seven-thirty with a break and then.
And then maybe a seven forty-five to eight forty-five?
Sure, and then deliberations after.
It's a long night, but you know, yeah.
I think I'd rather have it one very long night than.
And then we deliberate?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Alright, yeah, let's do it, paper roll seven, six-thirty?
Great.
Alright, cool.
And then you said the sec- second one was seven forty-five to eight forty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll do them here?
Uh, please.
Okay, so we'll start at six-thirty? Perfect. Perfect, perfect, and that'll be a long night. Okay. Um. We did that, I am going to request that we go out of order because we can't discuss questions while Mary Jane is here. But um I would like her to do her superintendent's report and finance report, and then we'll ask you to step out so we can discuss questions, if that's okay?
That's great. I don't have too much because we met last week, but I did want to let everybody know that, um, we extended an officer, uh, officer, we extended. An officer, offer, I can't say it again, we extended an offer to Cindy Sykes for the new um East Meadow principal. Um, and there's a little um bio about Cindy, she has, um, she'll be getting work here on July first. She's currently the principal of Boyaston Elementary School, and she served as the principal of an early childhood center um in Agawam. And a TSC therapeutic learning center also in Agawam. She was employed in Orange for seventeen years, where she held positions of deputy principal, special education teacher and general education teacher. For grades pre-K through five. Additionally, she was a teacher of first and second grade, an author, and Cindy holds a master's in educational leadership and management. And a bachelor's in elementary education from Pittsburgh State. Uh, the school committee will have an opportunity to meet Ms. Sykes at a future school committee meeting, so really excited to welcome her aboard.
Excellent, I'm looking forward to meeting her.
Yep, and on Thursday, March twentieth and Friday, March twenty-first, um, East Meadow students had MCAS kickoff rally for students in grades three through six. Mr. Rosenberg, who are former um health and wellness teacher, did a great job organizing the um event. And the students did a lot of um activities, a lot of team building, it was a great day. And Jenny put some nice photos on our website about that activities. And then um some exciting news for our staff. Um, our DLT met with school insights about our student information system, currently we use Rediker to report out to the state. So we are considering transitioning from Rediker to this new online portal, a platform. And unlike Rediker, the system will allow us to combine many of our online systems into one. Is a cloud-based system that will allow parents and teachers to view student information such as grades, attendance, very similar to what we have now for Rediker. But we are able to procure a funding, um. Source of funding for them for the next five years in a, at a pretty significant cost. Um, if we combine all those um services, neutral kids and, and family ID and arbiter, so. We uh met with the folks again today and it looks like um everybody seems to be enjoying the uh platforms, a lot easier to manipulate, helps with grading. So really excited to move forward. Our concern with Rediker is because it is um an older system and, and not many people are using it anymore. The reason we've never tran- uh transitioned from Rediker before is because the migration costs would have been extraordinarily expensive. So this company is allowing us to do that and rolling it into our, the fee, which is about seven thousand dollars for the next five years, which is. Had a significant reduction. Really excited to, to wel- that, welcome them to our. And we'll be sharing that moving forward with the families and how that's gonna work in, it, it's very similar to Rediker, it's really not gonna impact families that much, but it's, it's gonna be a nice um. Modern, and I want to thank David for bringing him on board, he did a great job doing some research for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
And that's all that I have.
Todd, direct.
Um, I don't have a significant update because we had our budget uh hearing uh in our update last week.
Excellent, okay. Um, anything for um our agenda for, uh, we don't need anything for next week because it's just gonna be more budget?
Correct.
Okay, that's open to the public, but no just, no back and forth, no questions, okay? Um, still six-thirty?
Still six-thirty.
Excellent, okay. Um, anything that we want on our um agenda for our next meeting, which is the fifteenth? Is that not school vacation week?
Uh, that's the week before.
Okay. Um, so anything that we want to have, um, we should probably have our subcommittees on that meeting for the fifteenth. Um, do you have anything else for policy, do you think, Liz?
Um, not unless you want me to do it by myself.
Uh, George should be back.
Oh. Then I guess you all can tell me, do we want to do? Whatever you want.
Let's put it on there and we'll obviously have budget still and um we'll go from there, we can adjust if we need to. When we get closer to, uh, into it.
So can I just confirm? I'd rather be certain here, we're meeting on April first.
Yes.
Okay, great.
That's a budget hearing.
It just threw me off because it was a Tuesday, good.
Isn't today?
Yeah, it is, but you know.
We're always.
I'm trying to, um, I have so many meetings in the course of a week that I wanted to be sure I had it right.
Yeah, I'm totally freaking out right now, don't we normally meet on Tuesdays?
Yeah, well, we do.
Okay, so why is it a?
I don't know why, I just wanted to confirm, Jen, so I didn't call you and say, oh my gosh, I had it on Tuesday.
Well, Monday's the seventh, that, that could have been the wrench in the works.
Oh. That's the interviews, do you have that in your calendar?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'm just out too many nights over the course of the weekend, for a minute there, I started to freak out and said, let me be sure this is the.
And then you have the fifteenth in your calendar.
I do. But I'm gonna double check that right now. Because I did go back and double and triple check that I had all the right dates, and I had a couple of the wrong dates, but the other ones were all right, so see. I have the fifteenth in there too.
Excellent, okay, if there's nothing else, um.
Still human.
We'll, we'll ask you to step out and we will discuss um superintendent questions, thank you.
Can you come back?
Um. Uh, no, the questions um cannot be on video, right?
They have to be discussed in open session.
So then why does it matter? Why does it matter, because she can go back and watch?
Well, it's, I think she may feel uncomfortable sitting here and it should be totally up to her, I would.
I, I would, I would want to have an advantage, like.
Right.
Would make me feel weird.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thanks everybody for coming, appreciate it.
And that's what we would have expected you to say.
Oh, okay, good, because I don't think it's right, honestly. I'll just go wait near the ruler.
Cause I, when we did it, the questions were not um public.
This is the guidance we've gotten from the MASC.
Yeah, you can't go in for executive.
Yeah, it's only for initial.
Right.
Uh, screening.
Okay.
I'll just get this.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Um, I don't think we have anything, uh, have anything else, so you're free to go. Okay, thanks.
See you tomorrow.
Okay, so questions. First off, how many do we, what is the sweet spot for questions? I've been on a couple of search committees now and it seems like everybody has a little bit of a different flavor of what it is that their expectation is, so what are we all thinking?
Well, if you have sixty minutes, that includes an opening statement and a closing statement.
Yep.
And you ask ten questions. That's, that's like tw- five minutes a question? Um, or, so just giving you an idea, five minutes should be. Unless you want fewer or more, but I would tell you if you have more, you're gonna want somebody with a timer. I think it's more like a conversation, if you allow at least five minutes of question. I think an opening or closing, so there's an introduction. Um, which we can do rather quickly. And uh, I, I like that format.
Okay.
Five minutes is a good amount of time to talk, and some will be less and some will be a little more.
And I know that we're supposed to keep all of the questions, the questions are the same, need to be asked by the same person in the same way between both interviews. Um, the only thing that I am, um, is we have to be careful for follow-up question, like.
You could ask follow-ups, so that's where follow-ups would be appropriate because they might say something that you want to, right. Learn more about.
That's based off information they provide.
That's exactly right.
Things that aren't identified in their response.
Fair game.
It would be inappropriate.
Okay.
It would be a double question that.
That's right.
Another candidate didn't get.
Well, for consistency, and so what that does for you is, um, not that I've ever seen it happen, but you. If you keep it fair across the board like that, right, you, you're not really opening yourself to any legal challenge around providing.
Right.
An imbalance. An imbalance.
Alright, so I guess, let's um. The ones that are in our folder are ones that came forward from the um, search committee.
Is that where you wanna start, Jen?
I'm just, I, I think it's a good place to start because the search committee came forward, they didn't get a chance to ask them because we only had to um. Two finali- like two candidates to move forward. So, um. I uh, I see someone highlighting them, most of the ones.
Oh, that's me. I, I was just gonna say, I like that um, M three. Um, in terms of the leadership question and I like the C I curriculum instruction five. Out of these questions.
And then, so then, um. I'm gonna find that thing.
And since I didn't have a printer. And we're discussing this here in open session, may I just share with you the questions I created?
I um, I brought a couple of questions myself, should I just type them under the document?
Oh, good idea.
Sweet.
I'm gonna let you type yours in, then I'll come back.
Is highlighting okay, Jen, as a?
Yeah, that's fine, I'm fine with that. Ginny, where is that document that had the full thing of M A S C questions?
Uh, it should be under.
It's in the folder, it's called copy of organized question.
Thank you, I couldn't come up with the word. Can I type in here while you're typing here?
Uh, I'm not sure.
You can.
I can? Maybe this is the first time I ever looked up to these lines. Alright. So, do we read them? Out loud, or how do you wanna, um, how do we, what's the most efficient use of our time for this, if we're, I don't wanna just read stuff?
Alright, so how many questions do we need total?
Ten.
Yeah, I think if we're doing this in terms of, you know. Open meeting long, we should read them out, so there's an opening and closing, right? And I guess, however you wanna go about reading them, Jen.
Well, there's only eleven questions on this list right now, right? So does that mean we only have to eliminate one?
We can talk about them.
Actually, Jen and I both put a very similar question in, which might be easy, make it easy.
Alright, so. So we have M three. C I five. D M two. P A twenty. A leadership, a budget. Meeting the needs of students. Communication. A D one, an L one. Experience question. Um, communication question.
Who's leaning towards that larger, multi-stage budget question, um. And I'll tell you, it can be harder reading it uh, to the candidate, it can be for the candidate to answer it, but um.
Which one are you talking about?
The one under budget.
It's in the compilation and it has parts like A B C D.
The P A twenty one?
It's B F seven.
But that's not on our cu- questions for search committee document that we're working in, that's just in under a diff- in the compilation one you're looking at it?
Trying to.
Okay, I was looking at that one, I just feel like it becomes so complex and if we have a time limit, each of those individual things.
I agree with you there, that's why I didn't select it.
I asked that question in our last search, um, in the screening committee, I did pare it down a little bit. Um, you know, there were a couple of essential items that I was looking to get out of it.
Yeah.
Um, but, like, that was last, last time, so.
Do you have what that wording looks like? Could you get it?
Um, I don't think I still have access to that final wording, because I think I, I, there was a couple of parts that I dropped, you know, um. The what, you know, inter municipal collaborations would you pursue or avoid, um, you know, someone who's new to the district. New to the politics of it, that's probably not the best part, but I think, you know, the developing and who are you soliciting? You know, who?
Who do you go to?
Yeah, you know, who are the stakeholders that you're reaching out to, to build that budget? And then their history working with, you know, town administrator and a finance committee, again, paring that down to what really reflects Granby. So, and we don't, this, everybody knows it's tight fiscal, you know, times.
It's, we're not unique in this situation right now with the budget situation.
Yep.
We may be more lean, so the cuts might end up impacting us more than others, but I don't know of anyone really that's talking about. Um, surplus or.
Yeah, flushing surplus.
I know, I'm not hearing a lot of that.
Right, you'd wanna hear, so, I, what I went with in place of that more complex question was. How would you work with local municipal officials to generate support and and trust for the schools? Now, that would require the candidates to talk about what they know and understand about how budgeting is done. In Granby, Massachusetts, right? Um, and you would typically expect candidates to have done that kind of research before they come in for a finalist's interview?
I just think it's kind of a loaded question because I don't think. I don't know how to say this tactfully, so I'm not gonna.
Okay. So you were, you, you just said what I was thinking.
I just think that.
I'm trying to learn.
I don't. I, from what I've gathered from different people that I've gotten to know, connections, whatever. The way we do things here is different than the way things are done otherwhere, other places. So I think that this question could almost be, seem as loaded, um, because. It gives one candidate an advantage in how they answer versus, versus, like I. Because of you, even if you researched it at a high level, unless you know a lot of the players and know a little, a little bit. Working with Granby is its own. We, we do things a little bit differently.
Can we have hope for that not always being the case?
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
And I, and I think reflecting on this as a final question versus a screening question is, I would. There's probably an answer I would anticipate on who are the stakeholders they're going to, what are they soliciting, if you're at this level. There should really be a patented answer, um, if, and some of that should come out in a broader question. Rather than this one that's, you know, much more targeted.
I thought the trust piece, um, again, with the little I know and that I'm trying to learn might be important in that question too.
I think you leave it open-ended, they should be able to name all the specific things.
That's, I, perhaps I'm more jaded than I thought, which is also.
Just because we do it a certain way, doesn't mean it's right. I, I would love for someone to roll in here and say, actually, the procedural standards are X Y Z.
Right.
And I noticed that in previous years, I've, I, I identified A B C and I'd like to make these changes to bring us in line with. These laws. So, I would think pretty highly of that.
Sounds good to me.
Sometimes simple's harder.
Sometimes simple is you're not leading them anywhere.
Right, because there's many leading parts to that other question.
So, the public relations question, back to the compilation, P R two, talking about most critical stakeholders. I, I kind of like where that goes too, because that kinda ties in. I'm gonna just bring that over, because I think we have some.
Is that in the compilation?
Yes, P R two.
I will tell you, this is not my favorite document to look through. And I didn't create it myself.
Oh, I, yeah, we, I, we all understand that. Oh, mine, when I bring them over, are the, um.
Right, oh, that's a good one. So that reads, whom do you see as the most critical stakeholders for the public schools in our community? That's a good one.
That's tough.
Again, not leading anybody anywhere.
Yeah. Cause then, or do we like, um, com five? How have you built lines of communication with the various district stakeholders such as your leadership team, faculty, community leaders, business interests and families better? Instead, you know, that's kind of a cross between what it, but I kinda like the wording of this one better.
I, I like that one, that, that's a tough.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what, there's so many responses it could be for that.
A hundred percent, which is why I think I like that one better than P R two.
In, in all fairness, we probably, well. Maybe or maybe not, it could, depending on what you think, something about interaction with the school committee.
I'm sort of.
How do you keep your committee informed, which is strategy around your responsibility, but where the school committee may have interest? And maybe leaving out that last part. What has been their response in feedback? Or describe occasions when you feel it necessary to consult your committee before taking out. Oh, here's a good one, the roles and responsibilities of school committees and superintendents are sometimes clear and sometimes ambiguous. For example, budget approval versus budget implementation, or personnel policy versus, and finance versus personnel administration. Or even dealing with parents and teachers with concerns or complaints. Can you describe some situations where these roles and responsibilities have challenged you and how you would work to address them? Where you are superintendent?
Where, where are you?
That's S C R five. I mean, that's a bit complex, but that's also very true. And any superintendent anywhere would have to deal with that. Or S C R seven, which is a little less complex, but, um, I don't know. And, and can I be shameless on my own behalf and say, the one I put in there under communication? Tell us how you have reached out to build, to build up a community constituency, no, that's not it, sorry.
That's who you have.
Meeting the needs of students, given the stress on the lives of young people today and the social, academic, and even financial pressures they face. How can educators in general and a superintendent in particular have an impact on the emotional well-being of students? I think is, uh, would, answers to that, um. Should be compelling. Since the focus of all of our work really is the students.
So my, you have communication, tell us how you've reached out to build up a community constituency. And strengthen relationships with local stakeholders, as part of your response, would you talk about how you would build a line of communication to the municipal leadership and the media? So mine, com five is very similar. Um, I think we could add just that last line about how do you build a line of communication to miss- municipal leadership and media? And then we kind of get both.
Wow, can I add that line to yours?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Good deal. Oops. Sorry.
Undo.
Yep.
It's under com five, under mine.
It is. It is. There we go. So, how have you built lines of communication with the various district stakeholders such as your leadership team, the faculty, community leaders, business interests, and families? I'm a comma fanatic. Um, as part of your response, would you talk about how you would build a line of communication? Anybody like the plural S on that? A line of communication to the municipal leadership and the media?
I don't know if we need the media part, but the municipal leadership.
We definitely do, yeah.
We need, we don't.
We don't need the media.
Should take, should take that out, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, this is not Springfield. Boston, Pittsfield, Chelsea. I like your, what do you see, how, what do you perceive as a superintendent's role in the community as well? I think that's important.
Because I feel like that was one of the things that we have, um, heard about from the community in the past is the, the vision for Granby for a superintendent is they want someone that's active in the community and out there and present and visible. So, I want to see what people, the candidates think about that.
I'd like to honor the work done by the search committee and at least include some of what they've done.
Well, we have the whole top is, um, the M three is theirs. CI five is theirs.
Mm-hmm. That's, I think that's where I was going, yeah.
And the PA twenty is theirs.
Oh, okay.
Um, then we have a couple of leadership questions, a budget, a couple different budget questions. Do you have anything that you would like to see asked as far as a budget question?
No, I, I think this'll get to it. It said, process may be a little bit different, but ultimately they'll share what their experience is with a budget.
Is there anything that you think we're missing? I mean, you're gonna be working with this person almost, definitely more closely than we are, so is there something that you would like to see asked?
No, I think we have.
You think this is adequate?
Yep.
Sufficient?
It's sufficient, absolutely.
I like that number one that Mike put in there. What experience have you had implementing reorganizations or change in organization? How did you do this? And what were the challenges or regrets? Two, two could cover a lot of ground, too, because that's, I mean, that's going to happen in the evaluation process, Mike, here, too.
Mm-hmm.
Tell me about a meeting in which you had to tell up.
Another, must be someone.
Others?
Sorry, I was just typing quickly.
Something they did not want to hear. How did you communicate those ideas to them? What was the result of the communication? If you could do it again, is there anything that you would change in the way you communicated or the way in which you communicated it? And why? Would you wanna just add why to the end of that instead of adding another question?
Sure. It should be in the way you communi- communicated it, not in the why.
I know, this is the exciting part, and honestly, in my job, it, you, I work so hard to try to do this differently because group wordsmithing is painful. I heard that sigh and I felt every bit of it.
I'm feeling pretty good with these. Do we have enough? I feel like there's a pretty good range of, um.
So, um, who's asking which? 'Cause I see yours are labeled, mine are labeled.
Oh, I don't care.
No, we're just, I, I, I think what I would like is if you could make us a document.
I just wanna make sure we have, 'cause I have seen more questions on here than, for instance, that we are gonna have.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure that the proper ones are highlighted completely, and then we can, I'll just.
Yeah, and then what we can do is, um, if we, um, get here a few minutes earlier than the interviews start, we can decide who will ask which, um, questions, and then we'll have a, like a grid or whatever, a, a template for making notes. So we have something to deliberate. Do you mind doing that?
No, and if somebody feels pretty strongly about a question that they, for instance, really wanna ask, like, we can assign that question to you.
Yeah, and, um, if you can get us what the draft looks like, if there, you know, if we think after reviewing it, if there's something else that needs to be added, adjusted, tempered, changed, whatever, we can, um, we can talk about it, you know.
And so just because, um, I know I didn't capture everything, but I went through and highlighted the ones that we all put in there that I, I like in yellow. Do you guys wanna do a different color or you wanna do the same color so that it makes it easier on Ginny to select the ones we decided we liked?
Well, I think we need to do the other ones, um, in here, right, to, in order to get us for enough.
So we got, um.
Thanks. Dave, I just want, this is Liz LaFawn. She's our newest, uh, school committee member. I'm not sure if you've actually met, this is Dave LaBonte. He's our, um, select board liaison.
Oh, hi, Dave LaBonte. I'm learning a lot about Hatfield, which you heard about six times.
Granby.
Hatfield. I was in Hatfield. I'm in Granby now since August. And I know I have a long, long way to go, um, but it's, I am endeavoring, uh, to get there.
Well, you look pretty determined to me, so I'm sure you'll do fine.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming to, uh, tonight, Dave. I appreciate it. Alright, we'll talk soon.
Thanks, Dave.
Uh, one thing before you go. Give me one minute.
Um, okay.
I have one question. Not, is there a particular setup you would like for the room?
Oh, that's a very good question.
Uh, last time we had kind of the hot seat table, a desk.
Mm-hmm.
Provided water and.
Perfect.
If that's the same format, we can set up the tables the same way.
Mm-hmm. I think that that works. Um, it does feel a bit firing squad-ish, but there's really not much else we can.
It's so classic, though, right? You know? You get to see, you get to see a little nerves at first, and then you get to see if and how they settle in.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And it is called the hot seat officially, yeah.
I think that that's.
We can call it.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, no, I, uh, I don't know how else we would do it, where it wouldn't feel awkward.
Or you just pull up the couches.
Everyone come in their bunny slippers.
Change the whole tone of interviews. Groundbreaking.
Like, like Google.
Do things differently in Granby.
We do, but maybe not that differently. Um.
Listen, I said that for years in Hatfield, too, and I got totally used to it, although maybe they didn't get totally used to me.
Um, okay. So, if you don't mind putting together that document and then sending it out, we can look at it and see what we think. Um, I put a little blurb at the bottom of what we're thinking for the order of the interview events. It's, I think it started at page three. Um, so we'll have the candidate opening statement, we'll do questions one through ten, and then a closing, uh, closing statement, right? Just to make sure that we have, we're all on the same page. Are you good?
Good.
Okay.
Can I, if we're set with, if you're set with questions, can I revisit, um, Monday, April seventh?
Yes.
So, we would invite the ca- both candidates to spend time in the two different buildings during the day and have a parent, uh, form a parent, open meet and greet, uh, prior to the six-thirty.
Yes.
Uh, first interview.
Mm-hmm. That's what I would say, and, um, if we're not feeling like we wanna do the whole site interview, maybe it's a, um, you know, we have one candidate in this school and one candidate in that school, and then they can swap, um, and just do it in the afternoon, evening, and just have the meet and greet, similar to what you guys, what was done here for the East Meadow principal, and just try to keep them as separate as much as we can.
Mm-hmm.
Thought.
So we want to ensure there's at least some time that there's students in the building so they can see the activities of the day.
Sure, yes.
Maybe late in the, later in the day, so it's not so, so long, you know.
Yeah.
Um.
One more question, and, and I defer to the district needs. Um, I've seen it done both ways. This, the candidate can ask who they'd like to speak to, and then that schedule gives the committee an eye into who the candidates wanna talk to, which could be important. And, uh, on the flip side of that, sometimes the district's just aside, this is who you're gonna talk to, 'cause it's more convenient for us this way, which is totally fine, too.
What do you think is gonna work?
Um, I think our DLT is flexible enough that if, you know, the person makes a request during the day, you know, we would have that flexibility, so, and, uh, I don't think we have to set the schedule for them.
Great.
So, do we think that that will work well enough on the seventh, or just, you know, between having the time and work between the two, uh, the two buildings and then the interview time?
Yeah, if we have, the process maybe start around lunchtime. And then it's maybe two hours in one building or so.
You're kind and gentle with that, right? I'd say be here by nine, but you are, that.
If, if we, just, if we're gonna say that that, a candidate could be here till nine o'clock, could be a.
District, too, so it's not even like some, it's not like we're multiple schools in multiple areas. It's kind of like we're pretty centralized.
Yes.
Necessarily.
No travel time. Cool, I'm good with that.
So, whether it's ten or twelve, you know, somewhere in there, but.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, makes sense, 'cause you.
Whatever works for you all here at the district, we're gonna have to deal with it, I think, is best.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll outline something.
Okay. I think that that, um, works, and we'll see what happens.
Okay.
There is a softball game that day, so there will be a lot of people around.
Ooh, that could be good.
Which is why I wanted it to be after six, because I will be at the softball game. It happens to be at home, which is fabulous. Good for me. Um, alright, if there's nothing else, then I think we're good.
And this will be a document that will be in the packet next time in case the public is so inclined, right? Okay. But I think we've read everything out of it anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The questions will be put into the minutes, I'll put them all.
Excellent.
I'll just, I'm just gonna clean it up.
Make it look nice.
Thank you so much.
With all the marks on, so we're good.
And then we can just have that for each, um, each candidate, and then we'll have like a template for getting information. You have a question?
I did, I thought of, is, are you going to make the questions, like, emailed to the candidates beforehand or the day of as they're?
I hope.
I've seen both, I've seen both. I don't, I just didn't know if there's a trending in a different direction to provide them beforehand.
I was just gonna lay it on them when we.
Yeah, I think put it on the, leave a copy. Um, so also, and I can share with you and use it if you like or not, but many folks, uh, many school committees, like, it's a basic template where you drop the questions in, there's a space to answer, but it tells you on a scale of like one to four, like, how did they develop their answers? It's not a rubric that you would anticipate, but for people outside the field of education, it gives you something to focus on in terms of how developed the answers were, what sorts of examples were used, and that kind of thing. I'll share it. Use it if you want, don't use it if you don't want. Um, I'll share it with Ginny, so Ginny can share it with everybody.
Perfect.
Alright, cool.
Okay, so we'll make the questions available as they come in.
Yeah, that's what we did the last time.
Yeah.
And we, um, I, we had it on the desk. When they came in, we gave them a few minutes to kind of read it. Um, you know, then they did their, went into their statement, and away we went.
Um, to read the questions?
Yeah, they, we had them on the desk. We let, we'll let them kind of.
Yeah.
Look it over.
Um, and that's fine. If it were me doing that, it would totally blow, confuse me, but it, whatever they prefer, whatever.
Well, we just had it on the desk, so some of them came in.
They could refer back to it.
Yeah, they looked at it, and a couple people came in and made, you know, they looked at it and it had a couple things that they wanted to.
Highlight the parts of the questions, make, you know, underline or whatever, the parts they wanna be sure to pay attention to, yeah.
Uh, 'cause I, I, you know, I don't wanna give them time to prep, so everything feels like a canned answer, but at the same time, I'm not trying to intentionally trip people up, you know, like.
Well, if you wanna be a superintendent, these are the kinds of questions you should be able to answer.
A hundred percent.
Should already.
So we can just leave them there and just, you know, roll right into it. I'm fine with that, too.
I'm just thinking, uh, we have an hour.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, well, an hour total.
Total.
If they expeditiously finish them off in, in efficient manner, it's okay.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
So we should tell, we should tell the second candidate, whoever that may be. I don't know. I, I tend to schedule alphabetically only because that's the only way, someone's not gonna say, oh, look, you gave them preference, you know?
Yeah.
But I don't care how it's scheduled, but you may wanna be sure that the second candidates arrive a little sooner than their anticipated interview time, just in case.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
We had them sit out in the lobby last time and then just went and got them. Right?
Yeah, yeah. Honestly, all the candidates were excellent last time. They all performed admirably.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, um, if there's nothing else, then I think we're.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.